I think there's a problem with one of them, but I'm not sure.
It's um, it's um, it's easy.
Had a public hearing tonight? Should we do?
Do we, did we have a, I'm going, do we have a budget? Public hearing last night? I'm sorry, I'm just. Thanks.
No, they won't. He's uh.
What was that?
So. Duh, surprise, right? Don't eat my cookies. I'm on my cookies.
Get some cookies.
I got it. I swapped mine.
There he is. That's not an Iowa sweater, is it Maurice?
Michigan State green.
Are you colored one? That looks yellow to me.
I have a little blue with blue and yellow mixed green. Go green.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting into order. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off, and I welcome you to our last council meeting, hopefully, for 2015. Uh, we'll start with a moment of silence, please. Bless you. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Brown.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Mayor and councilmember's comments, are there any comments from the council this evening? Yes, Andy?
Um, just want to wish everyone in, in the city a happy holiday, um, and to say I look forward to a 2016, uh, on budget with lots of new programs and new things happening in our fair city, so just ask that people keep a positive, uh, mental attitude moving forward and, and good things will happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Maurice?
I would like to, uh, inform the public that there's a school board meeting tonight at eight PM. One of the agenda items is, uh, a vote yes or no to send this middle school, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth to Marshall, and I'm asking everyone to go over and pen and, and listen. You don't have to make any comments, but be abreast of what's going on. As I've been going through the city this week, several people have let me know that they didn't know about the meeting, so I've been trying to inform people that there's a meeting tonight that I think is very important for our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, uh, presentations. We'll start off with the certificates of service for retiring board members. Glenn Culp.
John Condon. And William Walsh, if you would all come forward.
Mayor, could you get closer to the microphone?
Good evening. These certificates are presented to these three gentlemen, William Walsh, John Condon, Condon, and Glenn Culp, for their, uh, professional and personal dedication and years of service on local, uh, boards. William Walsh, uh, for your professional and personal dedication and years of service on the local officers' compensation committee awarded this 21st day of December of 2015.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you. John, for your pers- professional and personal dedication and years of service on the Albion District Library awarded this 21st December of 2015. Glenn Culp, for your personal and professional dedication and years of service on the Board of Board Review, uh, awarded this, the 21st day of December of 2015.
I think everybody should be able to do this at least once per year.
For the Board of Review.
Right.
I agree with you.
It's been quite a deterrent, uh, to...
Learn a little bit more about how the council and the, and the mayor operate. Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to say it's been an honor to serve in the library board for a very difficult period, as many of you probably know, uh, but I think things are on, on course to resolve most of those issues, and I think we're looking, the board can look forward to a very, very successful year with some great programming coming up. Thank you.
Thank all for you. Calhoun County Land Bank, a year in review by Krista Trout Edwards.
Good evening, everyone.
If you can, pull that mic towards you, if you would, Krista, please.
There we go. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, just real quick before I get started, with me this evening, our Board Chair, Christine Shauer, County Treasurer, and Maggie Stenthu is also a board member. And this kind of came about, we were getting a lot of questions about side lots and how that side lot program works, and I thought, why don't I just come, answer those questions, and then do a little year in review? So this is the first time I've been here for a year in review, so if there's something that is not here that you'd like to see, if I come back next year, let me know. Um, but it's just kind of about what's been going on with the land bank in Albion. We've had two grants this year. First is the target market analysis, which is a residential housing study of the downtown area, and then the second is a community development block grant, which was for blight elimination, so demolition of blighted houses in the community. We also started two new programs this year. One was Transform This Home. Of course, we have our side lot program, which we've had for quite a long time, and then another new program was the neighborhood mow and maintenance. And then at the end, I'll just talk about some goals for 2016 and some other news, and leave some time for question and answers. So this is a map, which many of you have seen before, it was the study area for that TMA. The reason we wanted to get Albion involved is you have a couple of projects going on downtown with the Bone Theater restoration and the Albion College restoration on Superior, as well as the hotel. So we thought there were a lot of catalysts, and if we got some additional data, we could attract additional development to the area. So this grant looked at identifying new housing options, determining the market potential, identifying potential residents, and it's really going to be used to attract developers and hopefully open access to funding and then, which would result in new projects. So this is a really wordy slide, but what it says is, the study found that there is a market. There's a market for new urban apartments, uh, that could absorb 23 to 35 units per year. Um, there's also a new market for urban condos, six to seven units per year, and when you think about those, think about those second and third floors of the downtown buildings that are currently vacant. It's those spaces that would be renovated for these types of projects. Um, and then there's some townhome market potential and some single-family, um, houses. Now, single-family houses has the smallest market potential, but that's because there's a lot of it here in Albion already, so this study was really looking at different housing types that could be successful here and would attract other residents. The blight elimination is probably the most noticeable. We've been tearing down houses for the last couple of months in the community. Um, this was a grant through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and we needed a local match, so the county land bank, the city of Albion, the county treasurer, and Emmett Township all put in funds. You may be wondering why Emmett Township put in funds, but we actually demolished two houses in Emmett as well, so that 4,000 represents 25% of their local match, so that's kind of how that worked. And what we did is we just, we tried to leverage local funding. Emmett had some funding, Albion had some funding, and we wanted to be really aggressive and show that we were going to work as a collaborative local jurisdiction. So we tore, we're tearing down 32, we have 23 completed and nine to go. There was some discussion earlier this year where we thought we may not be able to tear down all 32 houses that we planned, but we had some additional funding in our admin, which Mishna allowed us to move, so we were able to pick up those three additional properties. So we're very excited about that, they just approved it last week, so all 32 are going to go down, and nine will go down in the new year of that 32. This is just, uh, some photos of the houses that we've torn down or are tearing down, and what we did is we looked for buildings that were along corridors, buildings that had structural issues, clusters of blight. So you can see up here, there's a couple on Ionia, and there's a whole cluster on Center Street, as well as a cluster on Jefferson that's going down right now. And so we looked for those areas, and then we looked for worst house on the block, and we talked with city officials, and we looked at what local residents have said, because what we want to do is we want to help stabilize these neighborhoods, so we want to get the most blighted, we want to stabilize property value, so addressing those clusters helps do that, and then we also want to stop nuisance issues and crime issues, and so that's why we're trying to be aggressive with tearing down these blighted homes. So when I was here in April, if you remember that, I said, the land bank just doesn't want to tear down houses, we want to try and do some other stuff too, we want to try and do some rehabs, and we created a program called Transform This Home. So these are two projects in which we've done some, we are doing some substantial work. The first one is 712 North Superior, which has had a tarp on it forever and a day, um, up the street here on North Superior Street. We got this property in 2014, we did a roof bid last year when we had an issue with the roof, they came in very high, we couldn't make the numbers work, so this year we had the building inspector inspect the property to make sure it was structurally sound, and that if we replaced the roof, somebody could come in and rehabilitate it. He said, yes, we could, you could do that, so we rebid, we rebid the roof, we got a better bid, and that roof project is now going to be completed in January. So that roof will be done, and then we'll be marketing it through our realtor. It's currently for sale, but we'll update that, and we'll sell it through Transform This Home, which I'll talk about in a minute, but that's going to require the buyer to do the rest of the renovation. But we, sometimes, what we're, this year what we, our strategy has been, let's look at this big thing that needs to be done, if we can get that done, then it's more attractive for somebody else to come in and do some additional work. The one at the bottom, I think everyone knows about, it's 203 North Superior Street, it sits between, um, Lopez's and Dickerson's Music. We foreclosed on this, the county treasurer foreclosed on it in 2012. It came to us in 2013, we had some access issues, we knew there were some problems with the building, so when the treasurer foreclosed on the upstairs of Dickerson's Music this year, we used that to gain access to 203, and we knew we had a problem, and it wasn't very long after that that actually a portion of the floor collapsed. So we spent a long time talking to people this summer, we hired a structural engineer, trying to figure out, what could we do, could we find a partner to help us with this? And in the end, what we did is we replaced the roof and we tied the building together with tie bars. So, uh, Mr. Lopez allowed us to go upstairs and access that wall, and we tied it together, we tore the entire roof off, replaced it. We wanted to replace all the floors, but that came in at $300,000, and it was just too much for us to do right now, but we wanted to try and preserve it because we think that this historic streetscape is very important to the city. It's a historic district, if you lose too many buildings, that could affect your historic district status. So there's going to be more work that has to be done here, but the building is safe now, um, we're going to get the rest of the windows boarded up on the front, and you know, we've done what we could to make it safe for the neighboring, uh, landowners. So Transform This Home is a program we created this year, and I'm very proud to say that we've had two projects, and both of them are in Albion. So it looks like this is going to be a good program and a good fit for this community. The first one at the top is kind of a odd picture, but it's because they're doing work, and it's a picture of the work that they've done, although you can't see it very well in this light, but it's at Chaun, it's on Chauncey, and it was an old church building, and we fore, the treasurer foreclosed on it in 2014, it came to us in 2015, and almost immediately after that, the Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church approached us about buying this property and doing something with it, and also buying the vacant lots next door. So we said, hey, we got this new program, it's called Transform This Home. It's not a home, but why don't we try and see if it works on this project? So they were concerned about water in the basement, and they worked with our project coordinator, Amy Rose Robinson, on some ideas about getting, you know, re- regrading that basically, and putting some downspouts on, and getting that water away from the foundation, because if they couldn't get the water away from the foundation, they didn't want to invest more money in it. You know, they were looking at a demo. So they, they did what she suggested, and they, you know, they worked on that this summer and the fall, and they completed it in the fall, and it has worked, so there's no more water going in the basement. She just talked to them last week, so now they're looking at repairing the roof and moving forward. They have nine months to get a certificate of occupancy under Transform This Home. It looks like they're going to be on schedule to do that in 2016, in March. If they find they need more time, we will of course grant it, because they have been working on it diligently. The other property that we have is 902 North Superior, so a lot going on in Superior this year. That came through foreclosure in 2013, the land bank, um, became the owner in 2014. We had ongoing mission, or maintenance, I'm sorry, between 2014 and 2015, and we, we had some offers, but they weren't really working, and part of it was, we just didn't want to sell the house and not have any way to make sure that it was repaired. So we put it into Transform This Home this year after it was, um, created. We got an offer this summer, it turns out we had to do some quiet title, but we just sold it in December, and quiet title means clearing any, um, any outstanding issues with the title, which you sometimes have. So we did that, we just sold it in December, so they have until late August to do their Transform This Home on that property, so we'll be watching for that. Of course, we continue to do maintenance, 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 maintenance. We mow a lot of properties, we remove a lot of junk, we board windows, spent over close to 110,000 this year just on lawn care. About 20,000 of that was in the city of Albion for 25 lots. We spent nearly 30,000 on boarding and securing, and this right here is Union Steel, which is a big problem, um, that, you know, something, it's one of those big money ticket items, you know? Um, so we've been out there at least three times this year, boarding, covering graffiti, boarding, fencing, doing stuff like that, so that's something we continue to do. So the side lots, which we had a lot of questions coming in from Albion, how does that program work, what does it do? We sold four this year to neighboring property owners, so it's a vacant residential lot, the neighbor wants to expand their yard, build a garage, do something like that, we sell it to them for $210 if they qualify, so it means they can't have any outstanding code issues, or outstanding taxes, or otherwise be a bad actor, and we check with the city, we check the tax records, and if they qualify, we sell it on a quitclaim deed. If they want title insurance, we work with them, they just cover the cost of that, so it just kind of depends, if they're going to build something or make a significant investment, investment, we recommend they get title insurance. So we had 21 of these available in Albion in 2015, and we sold four, so we definitely like to see that number come up, if people are interested, and I'll talk about how we can do that coming up. One of the things we've had a lot of questions about are the post-demolition vacant lots. I mean, those things are just, if we could sell them right now, I, that number would be at least 10 higher, because people are really interested in them, but the Mishna grant requires us to hold that, hold those properties for 10, or six months after the grant, so we can't just sell them. And the grant's going to close at the end of March, so six months from that, maybe with some Mishna time added in, because you never quite know how it's going to work. We did ask them if we could sell properties sooner, they said maybe if we could income qualify them, and my staff hasn't had a chance to really look through that, but we'll check it out in the new year, and if we can, we'll, we'll follow that, but that's kind of the deal on those properties. So we started a neighborhood maintenance program called Neighborhood Mow and Maintenance. Um, any qualifying groups, so your nonprofits, churches, neighborhood organizations, they can agree to mow 20 properties and earn a stipend of $3,000 for the summer. We didn't have any takers in Albion, although, I hate touching the screen, although we did a lot of outreach, so we're going to have to rethink our outreach in Albion and make sure we're getting the word out. But we had five groups that participated in Battle Creek. Nobody quit, they all made it to the end of the season, and they all mowed over all 200 properties, and it was really good for the neighborhoods. I mean, they kind of went above and beyond, because they got, they formed relationships with neighbors, they helped other neighbors that needed it, so it ended up being really successful, and I really hope we can bring it to Albion in 2016. And our applications are now online in our new-fangled website, which is right here. As are side lot applications and Transform This Home, so let me see if this works. Hopefully it will. Chief Kip says we do. So we'll see, and if not, that's okay. But one of the things that we have trouble with is being accessible to people, so we did create a website, it does have properties for sale, including all the side lots in Albion, so when people have questions, we have somewhere to direct them. The side lot application is online, as well as the program description, Transform This Home, all that stuff is there, so I think it's going to be a lot easier for people to access information and, you know, and use our, use our programs. So some of our goals for our 2016 in Albion is to continue the relationship with the city and the college and other local partners. Um, what we want to do is find different ways to connect with Albion residents, you know, we've tried some, hasn't always worked, so if anybody has any idea, we're definitely open to talking about it and going to meetings, we did the town hall meetings last summer, but if there are other meetings that we could connect into, you know, we'd be happy to send someone. And we still need to seek additional demolition money, um, although we've torn down 32, we have about 40 in our inventory, which still needs to come down, and that's 13,000 a, a demo, basically, in Albion, so it's a lot of money, so we still can, need to be vigilant about looking for grants and finding ways to partner. We want to complete those two Transform This Home programs, we want to encourage neighborhood mow and maintenance, we really want to increase sales, side lot sales and other sales as well. So that's where we are this year, does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mayor?
What about the billions that are supposed to be coming for tearing down old schools and factories and stuff?
The billions? Well, Congressman Tildy is trying to push some legislation through, and we have him coming in January to do a roundtable discussion, we're finalizing that, so we're, we're inserting ourselves, and one of the things I want to talk about with that group of people is, what about the Albions of the world? And we really want to raise the profile of the city of Albion, and I, we need to have billions to tear down schools and Union Steel. You know, I agree with you, so we're on those updates, and we're watching that legislation, and we're, we're going to work for Albion, so.
Thanks, Krista.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you, Krista. Next presentation is by Jessica Roberts with The Big Read.
I have a handout from that. My name's Jess Roberts, and I, um, I'm here tonight, uh, as the director of The Big Read, and I'm here to give a version of a report that I suspect, that I know, actually, some people in this room have heard already, so forgive me as I repeat myself. I had the good fortune of being married to Nels Christensen, who is a member of the school board, and several weeks ago, um, as the instability and uncertainty within our school district became increasingly clear, um, Nels became aware of the many voices that we were hearing in the community, but he also became aware of one of the voices that was missing, um, and that was the voice of the children in our district. And so one of the things that Nels did then was he reached out to Harry Bonner, executive director at Kids at Substance Abuse Services and Kids at Hope, and he said, I'm really interested in trying to design ways that we can hear from the local youth, and Harry said, there's this great program, it's called The Big Read, um, and Nels said, oh yeah, The Big Read, uh, I'm married to The Big Read Director. So he and I and Harry teamed up together to try to figure out if we couldn't use The Big Read, a partnership between The Big Read and Kids at Hope, in order to create a space in which students in Albion, particularly fifth to 10th graders, could come, ask questions, share their concerns, have some fun together, and then also think aloud with one another about what it is that we're looking for, they're looking for in a school. Several students have gone to school board meetings over the course of the last two and a half months, I think that's really important, but there are other students who are never going to get up, um, at a podium in an open situation like that, whose voices I think are really important here. So happily, um, we gathered, uh, 18 students together at Kids at Hope a couple of Saturdays ago, um, and we aimed to try to create a space where they would feel comfortable sharing with us the things that they hoped and dreamed for in a school, and the way we did that is I asked them to do an exercise that we called the Happy Student, where I drew, um, some stick people, uh, on big poster boards, and I asked the students if they would please draw arrows to the eyes, ears, mouth, hands, feet, and hearts of the stick figures, and then write or draw on those poster boards what happy students see, hear, say, touch, do with their feet, and feel in the schools that make them happy. Um, and so that mechanism enabled us to have a conversation in which they identified a series of things that were really moving, I thought, in their clarity, um, about what it is that these students are looking for in a school, and on the piece of paper that I created, I list some of the things that they identified. So those students said that they wanted their school to support and challenge them, to teach them new things, to make thinking possible, to have clear expectations that are applied fairly and consistently by teachers and administrators, develop music, let students work and play, and keep them safe physically and emotionally. So those were the threads that came out of the conversation that we had, um, with those students. Another thing I thought that was really important that came out of that conversation was just how sharp and open and dynamic and wonderful the students were who were in the room, um, and how clear their thinking was about the most important things, um, for them in any system of education. So, so we had a lot of fun together, we did that, we also played lots of goofy games, they had us running around, and, um, they had to create a game of their own, which, of their own volition, they developed a game that involved multiplication tables, I, I'm not sure how that happened, but that was a part of it, there's running back and forth and doing multiplication and, and stuff like that. Then at the very end, after we had them try to eat powdered doughnuts off of strings without using their hands, um, we then called them back in, and we, um, handed out blank pieces of paper, and we asked if they would please write down something that they wanted those people making decisions about the schools to keep in mind as they made those decisions. And at this point, some of the students had left, um, but what I have on the back of the piece of paper that I handed out is a list of all of the comments that the students wrote down, they were completely anonymous, I've not, uh, amended them in any way, um, and I just wanted to be sure that I read them all aloud, so that the voices of all of those kids who filled those out could be present with you all this evening. So they said, I would like for the school board to keep in mind that the decisions they make affect us. Even though we will be attending high school in Marshall, can we keep the Wildcat pride? Where the students will go. Little town Albion needs to be known by something other than Albion College. What about the great kids in Albion? I would like this school board to think about the students' feelings when they make decisions, and not just the school, to think about who's in the school and how their lives will be affected. The future thoughts of the children. The kids deserve what's best for their future. To have Albion College help the schools. I would like the annexation, it would be for the best. Keep in mind that it's not for you, it's for the kids. People want, will want to go to Albion schools, but if it's a suitable school that has good teachers that make students feel comfortable and teach them things they need to know and learn, and have nice supplies, technology that kids would want. If one of the things that I was reminded of, uh, in working with this particular group of students was how, was what a blessing it is to have an opportunity to work with these students, another thing that became really clear to me over the course of the whole process is that I think we need to develop structures that enable us to hear the voices of their students more consistently, so that we don't just ask them for their feedback, but we create structures that will enable them to convey that feedback consistently, and not only in times of crisis. So happily, we will be applying for another Big Read grant in 2016 and continuing the Big Read Summer Leadership Program next year, and I hope that that can prove one of those structures, but one structure is not enough. We need more structures that will enable us to hear from our youth, to have multiple people hear from youth, um, so that we're sure that we are attending to their needs as best we can. So I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you so much for letting me. Thank you so much for letting me come and share their thoughts with you.
Thanks, Jess.
Jessica has to leave after this. I would like to, she is one of the nominees for the Library Board, so we congratulate you on The Big Reed, and hopefully the vote will go well.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything that you've done for The Big Reed. It was a very big success, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Did the kids talk about any sensitivity training or any diversity training in going to a new school where there will be some alter differences that they will? I'm asking this because of Coach McCarthy from the University of Colorado. He was a Christian guy, and he's the guy who found the Promise Keepers, and he was, he would bring in athletes of color, and they had a culture shock when they got there. They, you know, there was some small situations within the community, the civic organization, the business district, police department, the residential areas, that had not tapped into the transition of these students. So I was wondering, is anything being done through this program that you're doing to kinda indoctrinate them into the entire community?
So, do you mean with respect to The Big Reed program specifically?
Yes, because the question that you were asking was about them having some say.
Sure, sure. So I think, I mean, I guess I think I have two thoughts with respect to your question. One looks backward to a conversation that I had with our Big Reed leaders this past summer during the leadership program. That was actually specifically about A Wizard of Earthsea, which was the novel we were reading, and making the transition, not just from middle school to high school, but from Albion Community School to Marshall High School. And one of the things that came up with the students were issues of sensitivity, were issues of identity, and the thing that was so striking to me was that the book enabled us to have a powerful, sophisticated, complicated conversation about education and identity. But I think the thing that made it, made it possible was not only the book, but that we had established a community with one another that facilitated complicated conversations about complicated issues. So I think the more programs we develop that allow students to process and think about identity, encountering insensitivity, encountering what appears to be insensitivity but may not be, figuring out ways of tapping into their own resilience, I think those conversations need to be happening consistently, and hopefully we, I know that there are many programs that are enabling that to happen. I think that with respect to the conversations that we had a couple of weeks ago, that the students, I imagine, were thinking about issues of sensitivity when they were talking about creating spaces in which they were both physically and emotionally safe. And that was their language. I did not, I mean, some of this is my language, sort of taking their ideas and putting it on the page, but, but one of the students used that language of physical and emotional safety, and he said, "It's difficult because you, because school is the place you get hurt." And I think that's true for student, I mean, that was true for me when I was growing up also, and was sort of going into middle school and high school. I think it's differently true for, for our students as they move into an entirely different culture. But I, I hope that one of the things that will come out of this is that our students in the Big Reed Leadership Program will feel more equipped to lead those conversations, and then also that we'll develop additional structures that will help us protect our students' emotional and physical safety, no matter where they are.
Thank you very much. I received the book also. Good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jess. Next, we have a public hearing, the amendment to the Brownfield Plan. Were you gonna talk, Cheryl or Peggy?
Well, Peggy.
I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I'll let Peggy step forward. Schmidt, Smith, Sint?
Yes.
The problem with S is tonight. The public hearing is opening, and Peggy Sint, the F D. Go ahead, Peggy.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction.
It's really tea.
For those who don't know me, I'm Peggy Sint. I'm President of the Albion Economic Development Corporation, and I'm here tonight to just give you a brief overview of what is in front of you for action tonight and to answer any questions that anyone might have. As most of you know, a year or so ago, you approved a Brownfield Plan for the hotel project downtown. At that time, the geographic space that would be occupied by the hotel was all but two properties in a square block, which is Superior to Clinton and Porter to Center. Since then, the other two properties either have an accepted offer in writing or have a verbal understanding about to become an accepted offer, and they will be now included in the hotel project. So as you know from your packet, what we're asking tonight is that you revise the Brownfield Plan that you approved last year to include these additional two parcels of land. And then there is, because there's, there's some more buildings to be demolished, there's some additional cost, and those figures have been included in the changes in the plan. That's sort of, in a nutshell, what it's about, and I'm not sure how much more information you'd like to have, so I'll stop and see what questions people have.
Citizens, this is your time. Do you have any questions of Peggy? See none? Council, do you have any? If not, I'll go ahead, and I'll close the public hearing. And council, if there's no questions or debates, we'll move on to citizens' comments. Ah, citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Are there any citizens that have any questions on the agenda tonight? A question on the agenda?
I'm here to talk about the implementation.
Okay, we'll have to wait till citizens' comment. This is just about the agenda itself. Thank you. Okay, see none? We'll move on to the consent calendar. I'll do both of them for approval. Approval of Budget Study Session Minutes for November 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Support.
And approval of regular session minutes for December 7th of 2015.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions on either? Yes, Andy?
Just a minor typographical error. Under citizens' comments of the council meeting December 7th, comments were received by Jeff Kotas. His last name is spelled K-O-T-A-S. Other than that, I have no other edits.
Okay, any further? If not, roll, a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Fastest. Okay, individuals, per discussion, okay. A, request approval, second reading ordinance of number 2015-08, vehicles for hire.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? See none? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, request approval of resolution 2015-36, an amendment to the Brownfield Plan.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. C, request approval of resolution 2015-37 for fiscal year 2015 budget amendments.
I'm moved.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions?
Mayor and Council, I just want to mention, this is the annual action that you take in order to amend the current year's budget, to make certain that the numbers are in line with what we are actually experiencing and what we're projecting for the end of the year.
Okay. No questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. D, request approval, resolution 2015-38, fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation.
So moved.
Support.
Cheryl?
Mayor and Council, I have a brief presentation. Chief Scott, could you start the PowerPoint for me, please? As we recall, we've had a number of study sessions, as well as the public hearing at your last meeting in regards to the adoption of the fiscal year 2016 budget. What is being presented as a balanced budget for 2016, we operate on the calendar year, so January 1 through December 31 of 2016. And I would like to take a moment to thank our Finance Director, Tom Mead, and all of our department heads who participated in the process. I have it on a timer, so I have to speak really fast. As you know, our property taxes have been declining. In 2013 to 14, it was 8 percent, and then it had really passed. This shows the trend of the property taxes decline. It seemed, it didn't seem that fast when I was at my office. All right. Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. So in 2015, going through 16, our operating mileage is remaining the same at 11.973600. One of the changes we experienced was approximately a 3 percent decrease in our medical insurance by shifting our enrollment period from January to October, so that locked in at least the coverage for that two-year period, although we are subject to an increase of not more than 9.99 percent. Then in terms of our general fund revenues, what's interesting in regards to Albion is that our property taxes and our income taxes are almost an equal percentage of our overall budget. So in order to increase our revenues, not only do we need to have more economic activity, but it helps to have more jobs, job creations here as well. And our fund balance has been relatively flat. It's been in the area of 28 percent to 30 percent. We're projecting $2,016,988,669. Some issues that could still impact our fund balance are ongoing labor negotiations, development plans as they become available, and what would be our, our contribution to those projects, infrastructure projects, as well as the medical insurance, as I mentioned, is capped at 9.99 percent increase, and we're looking forward to the DNR Trust Fund Grant, and how is that going to impact our commitment relative to those projects. We are fortunate to have collaboration services that allows us to save some money as well with our neighboring communities. We're looking at the Finance Department, which is restructuring of the jobs. We're going to create a new payroll. And the Clerk, we're looking at some elections. I didn't have it that fast, Scott. And the elections, we're looking at at least three elections in 2016, most likely four, and there will be some costs associated with those. With the Recreation Department, as you know, we've had a renewal of the millage, and the projection for this coming year is also looking at going into their fund balance a little bit in order to do some of the programming that we're doing there. Our major streets, we added a line item, non-motorized vehicle fund, so that we could capture the dollars that we are obligated to commit as part of the rolling cycle for non-motorized streets on our, okay. And we're looking at a slight surplus in the local street fund as well. On solid waste, there was just the increase that was approved for the millage from 2.0 to 3 mills. We will be looking at a single hauler to find another alternative to our lease pickup program, but just, just not cost-effective any longer in how we're doing that. On street improvements, there was a three-mill approved in May of this year for five years. We're projecting $220,500 for revenues for this year. For the water and sewer fund, we have steadily declining revenues. We did approve an increase in the demand meter charges, but we still need to have a rate study so that we, these are enterprise funds, so they should actually, actually be operating as a business, and they should have revenues in excess of their expenditures, and we have significant infrastructure improvements that we have to undertake, so we need to take a good look at our rates. And relative to the sidewalk improvement, this was a 10-year assessment with the final year of collection being 2017, and as, it was initially projected that the 10 years was going to be sufficient to do all the sidewalks. We're now realizing that is not, so we'll need to come back and determine how we want to proceed and address that issue. Then in regards to all of our funds for 2016, that's $11 million in revenues, approximately 9.9 in appropriations. That very quickly summarizes the presentation of the budget for 2016 for your consideration.
That's a better number than we saw.
Questions? Yes?
So that $11,000 difference is better than what we saw?
$11,000, where?
Your appropriation, your revenues versus expenses.
Yes.
Was, was better than what we had seen at work studies, so that's good. Thank you.
We continue to look at ways to save and cut and.
Right.
Ongoing, it's not just a one-time.
Right. Appreciate your efforts.
No further questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Request approval, resolution 2015-39, capitalization policy.
So moved.
Moved and support. You wanna touch on that, Cheryl, please?
Um, Mayor and the Council, and I might need a little help from Colin and from Tom Mead, but if you recall, in our last audit report, one of the things that they mentioned is that we did not have this policy in place relative to how we print over the cost of items, capitalized items. So what you have before you is the establishment of that policy, and I want to applaud our Finance Director, Tom Mead, for pulling that together. I shared some information with him on some examples, but he was the one that actually pulled this language together, and our project has been reviewed by our, our council. But basically, this, it looks at the tangible and intangible assets that are used in operations, and then, and that are used over a single reporting period. So these include things like land, land improvements, easements, buildings and improvements, equipment, works of art, historical treasures, and then it also looks at infrastructure assets such as roads, bridges, tunnels, drainage systems, water and sewer systems, dams and lighting systems. So it establishes both the class of categories and the thresholds and the useful life for these types of capital assets.
Any questions, council?
I was just gonna mention, and I actually mentioned this to Cheryl before the meeting, that on the purpose of finding, the second to last line, it should read that the policy based upon various GASP publications, as well as the capital asset policy for the village of Mount Kisco, New York. It was based upon a different jurisdiction's policy, not our own policy.
Okay. So with that addition, that correction, no further questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. F, request approval for letters of understanding between the City of Albion and AFSCME, POAM, and POLC to extend the current contract through no later than February 29, 2016?
So moved.
Support.
Questions? Anything, Cheryl?
Um, Mayor and Council, as you know, we're in the middle of contract negotiations. Most of them are winding down, so this allows us an extended period with the current terms until February 29 to allow us to settle those negotiations.
Okay. No further questions? Roll call vote, please? I'm sorry.
Do, um, yeah, Becky has a question. Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead.
I had a question. I wasn't sure if it was the appropriate time, that's why I wanted to ask Andy, and forgive me if it's not, but I had a question about step eight and step 10. Why one employee would be held, would not be held to the same standard as the other employees as far as getting their raises?
This is the ACA.
ACA. Why?
That's not a part of the current motion. I think that's been...
Right.
So that's what's wrong with that?
Right. Well, yeah, we'll move down to the next one, which it says the request for the tenant for the TPOAM. Okay? We'll take that question at that time. If there's no further questions on the other one, we'll go ahead with a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Chi, is the request approval of the tentative agreement with the TPOAM?
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Now, your question.
Okay. I'm really sorry.
That's fine.
That's okay.
I didn't know what the TP... What's that got to do with?
I'm just confused with the language. I was hoping for clarification.
Okay.
Number 10 said each step is met by completing one year of satisfactory performance before advancing to the next step.
Yeah.
But number eight says administrative support services position will be a step for its effective anniversary date of October 2015, and eligible to advance to step five within six months. We had discussed them having to reach certain abilities and so forth, and I was confused by the wording of why that would be.
So, in general, in order to advance to the next step, they will need to have completed a satisfactory evaluation of their performance.
Okay.
The one, with a one-year period. The one exception is for that one position that's been identified, and for that one position, they would be allowed to advance within six months. That was negotiated in an effort to try to address the longevity question.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Okay. What was initially discussed was a modification to the longevity pay schedule. That was taken off of the discussion. That was no longer yet played. That was no longer being considered. Changing the law.
I don't, she was, the person involved would still be getting their longevity pay, correct?
The current longevity pay. The original proposal offered increases in the levels of longevity pay. So at, so for the, I think it was 15-plus years, the proposal was a $600 increase in the longevity pay. That was the original proposal.
Okay.
That was discussed and was rejected.
Right.
So in going back to negotiations, what was discussed was how to recognize the longevity of a particular individual holding a role, as well as recognizing that in certain circumstances, their compensation does seem to be fairly increased with the rest of the department. So, what was brought back was a proposal to roll that $600 into their base pay. What we countered with was to allow them to advance to the higher level, the next step, in six months instead of one year. So they would be the exception to the one year, because they're already at the top of the current scale. So we're expanding the scale, and this allows them to accelerate through the scale a little bit faster, six months, assuming that they still have to make, meet the performance standards and evaluation. So this was the compromise that was reached.
That saves money.
Okay, thank you.
Would that just be for that one thing or for all steps?
Just, just that one.
Just for one.
Just that one.
Oh.
And this was agreed to by the, all of the members, in fact, who were, wasn't just a representative, all the members of that union were present and agreed to that.
Are there further questions?
You got a question?
No, I'm looking at Becky. She...
I'm still thinking.
You're still thinking, that's my fault.
I'm still thinking.
Okay, what it is, is it's an exception to the rule that only one person is going to get that six months advance, six months earlier than anybody else. And Cheryl is saying that's what the union agreed upon. I disagree with it. We were supposed to have all of the evaluations in by now anyway. We haven't received those, and what she is basically saying is if she does get a good evaluation within six months, she'll get to the next step increase. So it's based on the evaluation of, within the next six months. Am I correct? The other ones will not be accepted to that. They have to wait their year to go to the next step.
How does the other staff feel about that?
They were all there during the negotiations, understood and agreed.
I know that they have a representative, but did each employee agree to this?
They were all, each member of the union was present and agreed.
So we may not like voted for?
Thank you.
If there is no further questions...
And if I could offer one other comment in regards to the evaluations. The annual evaluations are underway. They've already started their self-evaluations, and the director will be completing those by the end of the year and presenting those to me. So we're on schedule with those, so they are in process.
Okay. I've got a question on number five. The attached salary scale attached will be retro to April 1 of 2015, with step increases effective as the employee's anniversary date.
Correct.
So are we still going back to April?
It'll go back to their anniversary date that occurs after April. One of the anniversary dates is October. I don't recall the other anniversary dates.
July.
Okay. So it'll actually go back to their anniversary date of July.
So can we take out the retro to April? It goes to their anniversary date.
Well, they agreed. The April date was established based on our prior extension that it would be in effect as of April 1. So in theory, they could have tried to argue that all of them should have been effective as of April 1. We were able to negotiate that to have less of a financial impact by actually being on their anniversary date.
I don't know about anybody else, but I'm a little confused on that, I guess.
Yeah, so... Thanks, Mayor. So the April 1 is, we have, I guess I should ask the first question. How many folks do we have in this union? And do any of the anniversary dates happen before April 1?
No.
So the purpose of the April 1 is?
When we had our initial extension of the letter of an understanding.
From last year.
Yes, it was with the understanding that the effective date for the restructuring of the department would be effective April 1.
I see. So that's, that's in place from a historic, for a historical purpose?
Yes.
Not, not because it, it doesn't negatively impact us financially by having that date in there?
No. It shows that we're not ignoring our prior commitment to have something in place as of April 1.
Okay.
We're just adding that it's effective April 1, but it doesn't occur to the individual until their anniversary date.
And like I said, I guess I'm very confused how you can do that in line number eight, but in line number 10, it says each step is meant by completing one year satisfactory performance before advancing to the next step. How can you do that in six months' time, other than what you had said? And it's not fair to the other two people. I don't, I don't follow that, so... Yes, Maurice?
How I read it, it's telling me that April 1 is the earmark, the benchmark, the cornerstone of the agreement. And anything that happens after that, the precedent had been set for April 1. We are trying to save money by saying, okay, no one is going to, you know, move forward before April 1, but your birth date or your anniversary date, the date that you will kick in, the six months, this happened to be not a complete year, and then we moved it. So those people within that six months will come back to their birth date prior to April 1, but the other ones have to do the calendar year to receive the step.
Well, her anniversary date, the one that's in, we're talking about, was October of 2015. She went to her fourth step there. In order to go to the fifth step, you have to complete one year, and they're giving it to her in six months. The other ones went, one went in July, which would make them in six months eligible in January, instead, if they're not going to have to wait a year. And that's not what they're saying. They're saying the other two people have to wait a year, and with this next step from 2015, she wouldn't be eligible for the next step until 2016 of October.
And is that because of the birth date came first?
No, no, no. Anniversary date.
Okay, well, I'm calling.
That's their anniversary date. One year from that point...
They get their next step.
In a year.
Right. With the exception of...
The people who were in the six-month window when we started this April.
No, no, no. It's not a six-month window. They'll go back to their anniversary date, and it'll be one year from that date. If it's July, it'll be July 2016. If it's August, it'll be August of 2016. In this case here, it was October, so it'll be October of 16 and not six months from October.
I'm where you are, Mayor, but that's where the collective bargaining came, based on starting April 1, and some of them got, got into that prior to their next step. And then they had to wait to one year to get the complete step again. There's two different steps coming in.
Colin?
I guess the suggestion I would offer to the Council is if the intent is to have everyone in the TPOAM union have to meet the one year of satisfactory performance before moving to the next step, with the exception of the administrative support services position who, if it's the intent to be able to move to the next step in six months, I would alter the language in number 10 to read, each step is met by completing one year of satisfactory performance before advancing to the next step, except as provided in number eight as relates to the administrative support services. If that, if that's what the city's intent is, that might clear up the conflicting language.
Thank you.
Well, I think the conflicting rate is that everybody else has to wait one year except them. That's what the whole thing is.
I guess if the union, if everybody was in the, if everybody was in the room and they all agreed to it, I guess, I mean...
Right.
I, I, I don't know.
I think if they had agreed to it.
The problem we were trying to solve is we, we had an issue with the, the original proposal for the longevity pay.
Right.
And so, and so then, what I'm hearing is that the next option was just to fold it into salary.
Yep.
And we said no to that. So then this is like a one-time fix to solve the longevity problem, because I, I'm assuming, I shouldn't say this, I'll ask. How many people in that union? Could someone ask that? There's three people?
Three.
Okay. So if two people voted a certain way, and the other person refused to do it, what would happen?
Well...
If the person in that position?
It's what the union presents to me, so it would be whatever the majority ruled, but all three were present during this last talk. One thing I do want to mention is I believe the two individuals' anniversary date's around July, so their one-year mark will again hit in July. The individual whose anniversary date is October, with the sixth month, that is essentially July 1. So it kind of lines it up a little bit, if you're following my logic.
So it does keep them all in the same car then?
It, that's, that's the effort. They all agreed, so...
One more question. Was it unanimous?
Yes, it was.
Okay, the question at this point is, do we want to change the language, or do you just want to go the way it is?
I want to go the way it is. It was negotiated in good faith by our city manager and our...
If we're all done questioning everything, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
No, can't accept the language. Request approval for grant from Greens Fields Outdoor Fitness and purchase of outdoor equipment for Holland Park.
Um, Mayor and Council, you have a handout on your desk in regards to the grant from Greens Fields Outdoor Fitness, and I'm pleased to announce that we received another grant award of $4,000, and it's towards the purchase of the adult and, I guess, older exercise equipment at Holland Park. A description of the pieces that would be ordered are described in the attached materials. We do have the funds available, partly our local match of $12,370 is being met through the donation of $10,000 from the Calhoun County Senior Millage, and we do have some funds already available in the Holland Park Fund. There are ongoing fundraising activities, which I'm sure Councilmember Reed's going to talk about later, and I am asking for a motion to accept the grant and to authorize me to proceed with the purchase. They are requiring a purchase order by the end of this year with a 50% deposit.
So moved. With enthusiasm.
No questions? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to, again, congratulate Len Reed on doing some really excellent legwork on this and continuing the movement to bring Holland Park back to meet the needs of all generations of residents of Albion. So thanks again, Councilwoman Reed.
No further questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Request approval of boards and commission appointments and reappointments. There'll all be votes?
So moved.
Vote, voice, vote.
For approving.
Ah, I swear, it's really tea.
Joe, can we just do that as a roll call?
Pardon?
Can we do that as a roll call? I mean, we'll probably do it together, but we're appointing...
For what?
For the, for the board of commissions appointments. You can request it. Just because we're appointing people, I think probably have an actual vote.
Okay. Fine. We'll do each one of them as a roll call vote. Yes?
Really?
Questions?
I'll just...
Got the support, right? Can I have questions?
No, I need a support.
Don't have a support yet.
Right.
Oh, for the appointment?
No.
I've, I've moved to approve boards and commission appointments, and no one has seconded. Thank you.
Well, there's no second? Then I guess there's no...
Garrett just did. Yeah, I did second. Garrett just seconded.
All right. So we'll roll call vote each one of them.
Wait. No, I was okay. My suggestion was just to do, we could do them as, in a batch like we usually do, but...
As a roll call.
As a roll call, instead of just a voice vote, because we're actually appointing people, so...
One vote for all of them.
I understand that. What happens if you stop me in between? That's what I mean.
Wait, what?
If you have an objection with anybody...
Oh, well, that's what the discussion's about.
Yeah.
You know.
Do your discussion first.
So if you want a roll call, I have to do them individually?
No, you don't.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Everybody.
All right? Don't stop me.
I had my hand in the air, waiting to be recognized.
Yes.
Thank you. I had a discussion with a city clerk, Mrs. Domingo, and our city manager, Mrs. Mitchell. I was concerned about getting the word out. I didn't know that the openings had come. I was concerned about the announcements of the board vacancies, because some people had contacted me concerning some openings, and I didn't know if they had been posted or notification was put out so people could know that these were open.
And I didn't know if they had been, uh, posted or notification was put out so people could know that these were open. Um, Cheryl had let me know that she would check and see if some things, uh, had been done. And my second concern was, uh, receiving all of the applications of the people who had put in. In some of our prior meetings, we had stated that we would have all the applications for all the applicants with our package. But I, I did talk with Mr. Domingo and she stated if I needed them, she could get them for me, but I, I declined that. I just want to make sure that we keep our process going, that the citizens know that the openings are there, that we received the information on all of the candidates who, uh, applied. Because I could be voting and not knowing that someone else applied and I didn't get a chance to review their application. So, uh, I just want to know, was, were these announced? I mean, were they posted that these were, uh, available?
Um, the clerk can correct me, but I believe we ran a newspaper ad.
We did, and they were also on the city's website and on social media.
Okay.
Newsletters.
Thank you. That answers my, my question. I just wanted to be sure. Okay, uh, if, so are we going to change the? So if we need to know all of the applicants, should we just individually, if we need to know, just go to the city manager, um, city clerk instead of having them place in our package?
I would prefer it instead of using all the paper all the time if everyone doesn't want to see them. They're always open to inspection.
Okay, I just wanted that for clarity. Thank you.
If there is no further, we'll have a roll call vote after I'm done reading all of the appointments. Albion District Library, James Baling, initial appointment, term expires 12/31/2017. He's taken apart, a partial term from someone else. District Library, Jessica Robinson, initial appointment, term expires 12/31/2019. Building Board of Appeals, La Jensen Abbott, initial appointment, term expires 12/31/2019. DDA Peggy Sintt, reappointment term to expire 12/31/2019. LOC C Scott Brown, reappointment term to expire 12/31/2020. LOC C Elaine Rice, reappointment term to expire 12/31/2020. Planning Commission Scott Brown, reappointment term expiring 12/31/2018. Planning Commission Thomas Pitt, reappointment term to expire 12/31/2018. Public Safety Pension Board Jan Lazzar, reappointed, term to expire 12/31/2019. ZBA Board, Dwayne Ruff, reappointment term to expire 12/31/2018. ZBA Ron Rice, reappointment term to expire 12/31/2018. ZBA Richard Decker, initial appointment, term to expire 12/31/2018. ZBA Alternate, Barb Benavides, initial appointment, term to expire 12/31/2016. ZBA Alternate, Scott Brown, initial appointment, term to end 12/31/2017. No questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yeah.
Reed. Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. The, uh, mayor has also appointed Sherri, Sherri Rice to the Albion Housing Commission with a term expiring 12/31/2018. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Um, as we all know, Marie has flown the coop. But she sent a card, um, dear council members, a big thanks for everything. It was a pleasure to meet you, work with you, and discover how involved you are in the city. Thanks for all your help and support. Best wishes, Marie, the crazy French girl. Also, um, there's been a lot of media attention lately in regards to, um, lead and water, particularly in regards to plant community. Um, we were fortunate not to have that problem, but, um, some recent studies have shown that there is a high percentage of lead in the testing of children in this general area. So the Calhoun County, um, Health Department is formulating a lead task force. They'll have their first meeting on January 14th at 1:30. Um, they changed the location. It will be at the WK Telon Airport Office at 15551 South Airport Road. And they want to, um, just discuss why are children experiencing elevated blood levels. Um, it's primarily because so many houses were built prior to 1978. Um, but also trying to see what can be done in regards to that, once we have identified this, this is the cause. Also, um, I wanted to mention to you, we had recently adopted the new dog park rules. And I came to discover that although we only have one park designated as the dog park, the larger area, which is adjacent to it basically, um, is also used for people who have dogs. So we've opened the gate to allow them to use their dogs, especially for lar- larger dogs and people who want to run their dogs. And we'll have the rules posted there as well. So we'll use both parks as park, dog parks.
That's great.
I think we should have a fundraiser and then have a name for the park. Hint, hint. Okay. And we're pleased to announce again that, um, the Recreation Department is having their Bridging the Gap Program over the holiday break. It'll be open gym at Crowell School for this week and then the Community School for next week. Um, all students, um, in and around Albion, grades four through 12, it's programs at noon to three, and it's only $1 a day daily charge. And that's made possible through a grant, um, from the Kingsley Fund through the Albion Community Foundation. And, um, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and you see your, your flowers, your poinsettias and cookies at your, your desks. And I just want to thank you for a great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Future agenda items. One of the future agenda items that I would like to have put on is changing the budget year. And we have to do that prior to what? The wording has to get in by when, Jill?
15th of February.
Yeah, okay.
So I'd like that on there. Uh, yes.
Are we going to, we probably should discuss multiple options. Are we going to go to the state's calendar? Are we going to go to a July 1, June 30th model? So.
Uh, if we get Tom to look into it, I think, uh, Marshall does that, am I correct? And they also do a two-year.
Uh, they switched their budget year a few years ago.
Okay. And, and the reason, yes.
Just, just so the council's aware in making plans to do this, um, since this would be a charter amendment, it's kind of something we have to send to the governor's office. Who's in turn going to send it to the AG's office for approval before we can put it on the ballot.
Correct.
Have we?
Correct.
And just so, I'm, I'm just bringing that up because.
That's why I'd like to get it on there as soon as possible, uh, and get the, you know.
Yep.
By the first, you know, meeting in January, because Jill has to have the wording for the ballot and stuff in. And we know we have to trans, you know, anything that we have, getting ready to do that has to do the same thing, so.
Right. And the only reason I mentioned that is we have no guarantee.
So if we have any changes coming up, we've got to get those done so we can get the wording done and get them sent to the governor.
So the question I have is, because I know we also, we approved a previous meeting, um, I guess, changing the clerk's office setup. Has that, have, have we started sending that up?
No, the last, the, the, the only, the only thing that we've submitted to the governor at this point was removing the, uh, provision of, uh, the fair market value property.
Okay.
Um.
So we didn't do the.
The clerk's thing has not been done yet.
Okay.
So we need to get those in. Don't wait till the next council meeting. We need to get the wording and stuff now so that we can get prepared to do that. Yes, Len?
I'll start that.
Oh, right.
Okay, just a minute.
For the next gen of Holland Park.
Oh, okay, for future agenda items. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes.
So, um, that is something I wanted to ask when we could bring it up to have it sent, to add, having the clerk's position be a separate entity. Is that something that we should get on the next agenda?
That's what Garrett was just talking about?
I didn't, I didn't hear the answer to it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's, but we need to get the information into the governor's office because he's still sitting there. We've already sent the one, am I correct?
Yes.
So we need to get that in because of.
That's why I'm asking though, what info, is it information that we need to send or is it?
Oh, actually, no. Actually, it'll come from Colin, actually.
Previously for the proposed charter amendment and was there a public hearing as well?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we do the, we'll have the ballot language and then after the council approves it, the public hearing, then Jill sends an official letter to the governor and then once they get it, which, that's my understanding, they just sent us notice that they got our last submission. Goes to the AG and then the AG bounces it back and says, yes, go ahead, put it on your ballot.
And this is only to get it on May's. So if we do miss it, we can, you know, you know, we can do it later, so. Okay, yes, Maurice?
For the future, uh, are we going to have the December 28th meeting on TV?
Do we need it December 28th?
I don't think we need one. We approved, I think, everything tonight.
Okay, I, um, okay. So we're not going to meet on the 28th?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No need to, I hope. And the reason for the budget year change is because everything that we get, our audits and everything else, don't come out until June. So everything that we do in August, when we start our budgets, is everything is projected. So if we can have a better count and everything else, it would be a lot easier to do our budget and do it with good, solid numbers. That was one of the reasons.
But we would get our audit six months after our budget year ended anyway, so we'd be in the same boat.
So.
Right?
You know.
Okay. We'll talk about it next.
Yep. Okay. Uh, we don't have to make mention of anybody being absent. They're all here. Uh, citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city councils shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes and proper decorum is required. Name and address is required as you were turned to the podium. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, add that to the next future. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Jerry Clifton. I live at 15766 17 and 1/2 mile road in Marshall, Michigan. The reason that I'm here today is that I'm spokesman for many people in the city of Marshall and in the Marshall School District. I want to extend greetings and a Merry Christmas to each of you from the citizens of Marshall. The only reason that I'm here this evening, some comments that was in the Powder Creek paper talking about annexation of the Albion schools to the Marshall schools. And there was some discussion about that. If I was reading right, there's kind of a split as to what goes on. I'm sure you all know what annexation means. Annexation in this situation is not a win-win situation for the city of Albion. I got to give you just a little bit of history. I'm 82 years old. I've been in business for 60 years. I was a banker for 25 years. I owned Coldwell Banker and Investor for 32 years. I was a member of the Marshall School Board for 12 years. I was chairman of that board for four years and vice president for another four years. But I'm very concerned about the city of Albion and why? Because of my history in the banking business in Albion. Where I'm coming from, in the past, I know many people in this congregation here today. I know their parents, I know their grandparents and great-grandparents. So I go way back to the point that I've been involved with many businesses and many corporations in this town. And I'm so concerned about the city of Albion losing its autonomy. If you lose your autonomy, it's a bad road to go. And I'm so proud of hearing and seeing your budget, this is the right night to come here. You have a very good city manager, because when you have a budget like that and you balance the budget, that's good. And you're questioning everything that's on your board about this and that, the pros and cons. Now, many times that doesn't happen, because in so many boards, you have a leader and maybe assistant leader and everybody else is a yes man. And so I keep coming back to autonomy. You can't, and it means a number of things. It means taking away the people's rights. Independence, liberty, citizenship, being in bondage to another, and that would be Marshall. This board must give professional decisions to the Albion people. Because the Albion school boards have failed in its responsibility. Completely failed, not this present board only, but the school boards for the past 20, 25 years. And so when you sign away your children's rights by annexation, Albion will cease to exist as a community. We have other choices. We have school of choice, which everyone is taking the liberty of using that today. You're using five different schools with your students. And I want you to know that the people of Marshall welcomes all of your students into our school system. And we can guarantee you the best education possible. But we don't want to take away the rights of the people here. If they want to go to other schools, they have that right to do so. And so that's one of the concerns I'm, I'm talking about. They're talking about when you're looking at annexation, you're taking, wiping out your whole school system. And so I know the citizens of Marshall thinks that. The only way that you can keep this city altogether is keeping your elementary school. Having that, you do have a base. The other way, you've given away all of your rights. What it really means, if you go the route of annexation, it means that you've given up your rights and Marshall is the banker for the Albion school system. They are the banker. So in turn, it's like if you're going to the bank to get a loan. The banker is the one that makes the final decisions whether you get the total package or not. And so don't let that get away from you. Remember that. In order to present this properly, you really need to keep your citizens fully informed of what's happening here. Because the other choices are school of choice and a mutual agreement, which we're working on at the present time. Those things can continue. And it's the best way. Where we are is that we know nothing about annexation. The Albion School Board knows nothing about annexation. And the state of Michigan does not know anything about annexation either. Because they've only had, if you can imagine, in the last 20 years, they've had six, six annexations. And at the last school board meeting that you had here, the Assistant Treasurer for Education for the state, he was there. He had no answers. He didn't have any answers as to how this is going to be pulled off. And so it comes down to what's happened is the Albion Board of Education has washed their hands of the whole thing. They're saying, Marshall, you take this over and you run our schools for us. That's very unfair. But, but it boils down to, people, if you give away your rights, all of these things that was on the board here today of what you're planning on doing and so forth, will not happen. Because industry, unless you have a base, a school system base here, they're not coming here. You're not going to be having the people up and down Main Street. I can tell you this right now, because of what's happening with your students coming to Marshall now, is that you come to the Save-A-Lot, the Buy Right, and you come to the other grocery stores there. Your people are over there already buying. They have left Albion. And you bring the rest of your students over here and they're going to be all over there. We welcome everybody. We're not, so that's not the situation. But I hate to see from the things that I have done and what the history of this town has done for the people. I hate to see you lose all that in the form of annexation. So you want to keep your citizens informed, seek help from Albion College and their assistants. Albion College has not helped Albion since they've been here. It's just like you got a, you got a wall there. And that's very unfortunate to the point that the gentleman representing Albion College at the Marshall School Board meeting, when I brought this to his attention, he apologized and apologized and apologized with the idea that he was going to change that. And so what it amounts to is ask the Albion College to help you. Then the next thing, get Albion's business leaders to the table and come up with a mutual agreement between the cities that. agreement between the cities that can be accepted. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have citizens' comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Albion government?
Name and address, please.
Emery and Irene Bates. And we're the owners of Maxi Transportation. And, um, we would just had a few, you know, thoughts about, uh, the new amendment. And, um, you know, we see different things around town that, you know, we're just wondering how are they gonna be enforced? I mean, we want to be the only taxi businesses going around here right now because we went through the ropes and paid our part. But, um, for instance, if there's other people going around doing business as a taxi, how is this gonna be enforced in the future?
That's not licensed.
Okay. Pardon me?
They're not licensed.
Yeah, you know, that, that isn't licensed.
Waiting for an answer?
Yeah.
In order for them to do that, and I'll make it quick, is that they have to go through the clerk's office in order to be licensed and permitted like you are. And that, from that point, will be enforced through law enforcement and through code enforcement. So if there's a complaint, they have to file a complaint so they know who they have to go check and see if they're following the rules and regulations.
Okay, that's, you know, that, that's the thing that, um, captured our attention was to see, you know, looks like transactions of, uh...
Mm-hmm.
Vehicle for hire, other than us.
With the due ordinance, that is what they have to follow, so.
Okay.
If they're not following those ordinances, then those ordinances will be enforced.
And you would have to let us know if, if you knew of something that was not above board?
So they can do it now?
No, they can't do it now.
They can't do it now.
So where do you file a complaint at?
Clerk's office.
Yeah, because you know, like, the city of Albion, um, isn't a whole bunch of people here. But we're gonna try to make a go at it and make it good for the city of Albion, working with the public and the senior citizens around here. And I think we need a taxi service around here really bad. We do. It's a lot of people that can't afford vehicles and need to get to the store, might stay on the, uh, south end of town and need to go up to the north end of town. And that's why we're here.
Right.
Try to help. But, uh, we were just, our main concern was enforcement of other, you know, uh...
Correct.
People going around.
Yep, they have to follow the ordinance just like everybody else.
Okay.
Okay?
I just appreciate it that, you know, that, uh, public safety or whoever is in code.
Right.
You know, just keep an eye on it.
And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay.
Anyone else tonight?
Good evening. I'm Christine Shower, the Calhoun County Treasurer. I actually live in Bedford Township, but here I am. I, um, holiday greetings to you all. Um, I just wanted to, uh, remind folks, um, you saw the Great Land Bank, uh, presentation, and the land bank deals with properties that are on the far side of foreclosure. And part of what I have to do as county treasurer is, is that whole foreclosure process. We are at the point right now where we have folks, um, who are struggling to pay their property taxes, uh, who are in danger of their house foreclosing. Uh, March thirty-first is the magic date that the twenty thirteen tax year would have to be paid, uh, to save a, a property from foreclosure. So at this time, we're trying to encourage those taxpayers who are struggling with making that deadline to go ahead and contact our office. We have some tools we can use before the foreclosure, but nothing much can be done after, nothing really. Uh, we have hardship extensions that we're able to, uh, work with qualified folks on. We're talking about owner occupants, so folks who are living in a house that they own, uh, are the prime candidates for those hardship extensions of time. It doesn't stop the interest, doesn't stop the fees. Uh, although we do have a tool now where, um, uh, the legislature has, um, given me a window of time to be able to reduce some of the interest that I have to charge. Um, it is again, on, under qualified circumstances. The other thing, uh, that we've had the past several years that has helped a lot of taxpayers in Calhoun County is the Step Forward Program. This money is part of the Michigan Hardest Hits Funds. Um, it does, uh, pay tax, back property taxes for people. It brings them even with the board so that they can then keep up with it from then on. It's a program that has brought about a three-quarters of a million dollars of tax, taxes into Calhoun County and has helped about a hundred and fifty-some families in the county. Unfortunately, this program is ending. You must apply for this program by the end of this month. Um, so I'm, uh, hoping that if any of you are in contact with your constituents, uh, any, anyone you might know of who could, uh, benefit from the program, that they either get in touch with my office, go to, um, Step Forward Michigan, uh, websites, or, um, otherwise get their applications started, uh, by the end of the month. Um, because those funds are drying up, they've been a one of a kind fund that actually pays cash money for back property taxes. So, um, those are, are the two pressing things I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. Um, last year, I believe we had forty-some properties foreclosed in Albion. And, you know, we want to see that number keep coming down. So prevention of foreclosure, keeping people in their homes, but they need to take that step and reach out to us, uh, now, instead of waiting till after the foreclosure. So I wish you all happy holidays and, um, you know, and a prosperous new year.
Christine?
Yes?
Is that only for residents or is that for commercial as well?
It's for ho, owner occupants.
Okay.
Uh, the Step Forward Program, you have to own your home, um, you have to have an income. It's not necessarily for ultra-low income, because the idea is if they bring you even with the board by paying your taxes, you would then be able to just pay them at the city or your township going forward. So unfortunately for some people, they just don't have the income...
Right.
...to, to do that and are then not eligible for that program.
To be a stable, okay.
Um, we can help them with a hardship extension of time under most circumstances, um, like that. Uh, we are looking at folks who are struggling financially for, for those. But again, it's mainly, uh, aimed at the owner occupants of, of houses.
Good.
So, any other questions?
I'm trying to get to this one.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further citizens' questions? See none? I've got one thing to say, and that's thank you to all the citizens in the council. Twenty sixteen will be a great year as long as we all make good choices and decisions for all of our citizens. Happy holidays to all. Please be safe and we will see you all January twenty-sixteenth. Thank you all very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you.
I would say that Mr. Clifton does not represent. He'll admit, but voices of motion.